Good morning. Good morning. Welcome to the City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our City Council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery is absent today. Councilman Beck.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pull down our prayer. Let we come to you now the humblest way we know how. Come down here with humble hearts, looking unto you, oh Lord, you're the authentic finisher of our faith. Ever reminded how much we need you, how much we depend on you, can't do anything without you. We lifted up this council meeting today, we lifted up our mayor, lifted up the council, and we lifted up every person that contributes in any way here in City Hall. God, help us to be mindful of this season that we're in, this resurrection season. Past Ash Wednesday, now we're in Lent season approaching Palm Sunday, getting ready for Holy Week. We ask that you continue to lead and guide us and direct us, God. We need your wisdom, we need your counsel, we need your understanding. We give you every bit of praise, the glory, and all the honor. We ask it all in the match for Sam and our risen Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. We pray. All of the degrees, say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the General Administration Committee work session and City Council meeting held on March 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of March 3rd through the 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is proclamations and commendations. Mayor, I believe you have a good audience with us today.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council, and I don't have my reading glasses. Can I, Iva, do you mind helping me?
Yeah. I'm gonna let you read. And if we could ask the middle school Quiz Bowl team to come on up here, is that what
we call you? Scholars Bowl team. Thank you. Come on up here. And before I get started, Chip Edwards said he'd like to be recognized today, so Chip, would you raise your hand? Thank you, Chip. All right, go ahead.
All right, this is Mayor's commendation. In August 2022, Dr. Sue Bliss reestablished the Gadsden Middle School Scholars Bowl team. They started out with seventeen 7th and 8th graders. During the months of September through December, the new team members had local scrimmage challenges with other schools in the county. From these scrimmages, the 7th and 8th grade team had to be reduced to form one six-member team. The official competing team consisted of Latika Prasad, 7th grader, co-captain Lowens Robinson, 7th grader, co-captain Andrew Guin, 7th grader, Gray Stevens, 7th grader, William Edwards, 7th grader, and Hudson Ellis, 8th grader. On January 21st, 2023, the GMS Scholars Bowl team won the Alabama Scholastic Competition Association District Championship, which qualified them to compete at the state level. Due to this victory, the Scholars Bowl team began to prepare and practice for their upcoming meet at Hoover High School. On February 25th, 2023, the GMS Scholars Bowl team went five to one in round play, which qualified them for the quarterfinals, and then beat the Posits Middle School from Vestavia, placing them in the semifinals. They went on to compete against Bumpus Middle School, who defeated GMS, which placed them in third place by winning against Monrovia Middle School from Huntsville. We would like to commend the Gadsden Middle School Scholars Bowl team for a job well done at the district and state level for the Alabama Scholastic Competition Association. Congratulations and thank you for representing Gadsden. We would also like to congratulate Latika Prasad for being selected to be on the Scholars Bowl All-Star team, as she was named number four in the entire state, along with being the only female on the team. We would like to wish you well at the national competition that will be held in New Orleans on May 26th through the 29th.
All right. So if you're a parent, if you're a parent of one of these, would you please stand? We see Judge Robinson and his wife, and we want to thank you all for coming. And listen, we honored three Merit Scholars from Gadsden City High a couple of weeks ago, so it looks like we got three more on their way. But congratulations, and Lee, is it possible to get more copies of these? Who makes these? So we can have a copy for each child? Not now, but I'll get them. Who makes them? I'm just curious. Melcy?
Melcy.
Okay. Well, I guess we can, yes. Okay, so I'm gonna ask all the students to come up here, is that okay with the council?
Sure.
That we all get a picture together? So y'all come on and follow me, okay?
You two.
Steve has got this big picture like this.
I had a Ross Scott in my life.
All right, count three. One, one, two, three. We get one more. One, two, three.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I want to see the mayor.
No.
Councilman Smith, I never got this paper.
Okay, this is impromptu, didn't expect to speak. I'm very proud of this team. They're a great team, great to work with. I appreciate how hard they work, all the many hours they have put in to get where they are, being a new team, young team. We did, and I don't know if it was in there, when we played, about ninety percent of the students that we competed against were eighth graders. And all of ours, except one, is our seventh grader, so, which was, we're looking forward to next year, I'm looking forward to them working hard. Want to thank Mr. Goodwin for his support, and all the parents who are there tirelessly having to travel different places and putting up with me.
Thank you.
But they've done a great job, and I want to thank you guys. God willing.
Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't get a chance to stand up as a parent, but I did want to exercise some pastoral privileges to say I am the pastor to one of them. And so we're proud of each and every one of you, and just continue to strive for the sky, and you know, there's no limits to what you can accomplish. Congratulations to all of you. Great job, Gray. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. I'd like to, while we're in the proclamations and commendations, I'd like to recognize our friend and County Commission President Craig Enzer is here with us. Craig, or President, thank you for being here today. You're welcome. If you'd like to have anything to say, if you want to share something, we can suspend the rules and let you talk, or you just want to...
I just came from County, the County Courthouse, had our meeting this morning, and had to get meeting IDA Director David Hooks and our developer together on this new project that we've been working on, and just want to show my support to the council and the City of Gadsden, and thank you all for what you do, and on behalf of the County Commission we're here to support you all, and just want to build this relationship more every day than we've been. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I think that just goes to show, Mayor, the hard work you and your staff are doing in working with our County Commission and all the other cities in Edgewall County. We were at the Alabama League of Municipalities meeting last week in Montgomery and shared a lot of time with cities there that were there, Southside, Rainbow City, Hoax Bluff, Glencoe, all of the mayor and their councils, and it was, it was a good time to get to share some ideas and some conversations. So Craig, thanks for being here. Appreciate all the work that you guys are doing. Thank you. All right, item eight on our agenda. Items 8A and 8B are ordinances authorizing conveyance of property that were presented last week for the first reading. Dave Cummins has offered to purchase both properties located in the 3100 block of Sudie Avenue in District 6. A mistake was made in the amount Mr. Cummins offered, and we have a substitute ordinance for each, changing the amount to $500.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we consider a substitute ordinance for item 8A that, again, adjusts the purchase price of the property to $500.
All right, that's at 3113 Sudie Avenue. Is there any discussion?
Need a second.
Yes, ma'am?
Second.
Second, all right. Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the substitute ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted for the substitute.
Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance as substituted.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt the ordinance as substituted.
We'll need to do the same process for item 8B. The Chair will entertain a motion to substitute the ordinance for item 8B relating to lots one and two on Sudie Avenue.
So moved, and again, just for clarification, this is changing the purchase price of the property to $500.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, well, I'll wait till we actually consider the resolution. You go ahead.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the substitute ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just want to point out and give a big thank you to Mr. Dave Cummins, who's built over sixty affordable houses in the City of Gadsden and a long career of investing in our city. And just to clarify, the purchase price on a couple of these properties, I think, that have been on the, on the city's ownership structure for years, was originally $10, and Dave Cummins actually came back to the city and said that he had a longstanding agreement with the city that he would pay $500 for any vacant property that he purchased. So Mr. Cummins voluntarily came back to us and gave us an extra $490 per lot. So again, thank you for individuals like Mr. Cummins with that kind of integrity are not, are less and less common these days. So I appreciate everything he's doing for the city and everything he's done to help build our, our affordable housing base.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Cummins. All right. Have we voted on that? No? All right, clerk, will you please take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance as substituted, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you. Item nine on the agenda, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 503 Patterson Avenue in District 1, State of Alabama, possible rights of redemption of Samuel Fears, Cassandra Coates, Georgia Wyatt, and Virginia Wyatt, their heirs, successors, and/or signs being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case in June of last year, there have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion that we move the ordinance.
Second. A second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10, our final public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 505 Patterson Avenue in District 1, Shara D. Bell being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a burned mobile home. We filed it also in June of last year, there have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
Thank you. And what is the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to abate.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is new business. I don't believe we have any today. Item 12 is department reports, committees, and boards. Any of those today? Okay. Item 13 is remarks by mayor and council. Mayor, we'll start with you today.
Thank you, Mr. President. To let the public know, we submitted our earmark applications with Congressman Adherold's office as in regard to the 411 relocation and the riverfront development on this side of the river. We're also clearing 3.5 acres in North Gadsden. It's a piece of property that the City of Gadsden own, it's behind Mars Shaved Ice, if you're familiar with it, and we figured if we could clear it out, that's maybe more advantageous for the STEM research Huntsville, I'm not sure the name of it. Challenger Center.
Challenger Center, yes.
May want to locate there. Reminder of the comprehensive plan kickoff is tonight at 6:00 PM at the venue, we're asking everyone to attend, it's very important. Goodman Mills and Kay Wood will be hosting this meeting, we hope that everyone can attend and put in their thoughts. There's also a survey online that we're asking everyone to fill out also, and if you haven't done so, the instructions will be available tonight. The mayor's staff will be heading to Montgomery tomorrow to meet with a DECA, or Department of Commerce, also regarding potential grants for some other opportunities that we'll discuss later. Municipal Court Amnesty Day is March 22nd, it's next Wednesday. These are mostly failure to appear or fines or fees that we're offering, we're extending that deadline, so hopefully some will take advantage of it. First Friday starts in April, there's a St. Patty's Day event Saturday night. We want to thank, again, the venue, what we said earlier, Debra and Scott, and the Parks and Rec for the fishing expo next year. Hopefully, we can get our tourism board, Mr. Hugh Stump on board with helping us promote this project with his help, and the tourism board, I think we can make this a bigger success than what we had this year.
All right, thank you, Mayor Ford. Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, President Beck. Let me say congratulations and job well done to Gadsden Middle, Gadsden Middle School Scholars. And I also want to thank Mayor Ford and the department heads for sharing with District 1 for our first district meeting. It was a success. Thank you, District 1, for coming out and having just a good, positive meeting. Thank you, Mayor Ford, and thank you, John Moore, for the weather radios. So we're off to a good start, great start, and that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to say thank you to everybody, as always. I'd just like to show appreciation, thank you for everything that you do, does not go unnoticed, it is greatly appreciated, every single thing you do. Thank you to our mayor and council and staff. We had a great week, spent the day in Montgomery with the City Council, and learned a lot at Advocacy Day down in Montgomery, looking forward to Washington as well. And so we ask that you continue to be patient with us as we grow and as we learn. Good to see Commissioner Enzer, we look forward to working with you all in the very near future as well. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, thank you again, Commissioner Enzer, for being here. I really appreciate your support in the olive branch. Congratulations to Gadsden Middle School. It's funny, I was having a conversation with one of my family members the other day about Gadsden schools versus county schools, and it's my understanding that you guys represented yourself well against our opponents in the county. So congratulations. On a sad note, I do want to say my condolences to Ms. Myra Scott, and Hillary Scott, and Erin Scott, who are now Hillary Agricola, and Erin Freeman, so to the Freeman family and the Agricola family and the Scott family on the passing of Bart Scott. Outside of my dad and my stepdad, Bart Scott was probably one of the most influential men in my life. Not only did he whip me regularly on the golf course as a young man, he also helped me get into Auburn University, he helped me get my bid to Sigma Nu fraternity at Auburn University. He bailed me out of my first gambling debt when I was nineteen, and I got up behind with a bookie, couldn't afford to pay him. Throughout my life, Bart has stayed in touch with me and, and always supported me, and some of y'all maybe have heard me say this in motivational speeches from time to time, but this actually came from Bart. Bart reached out to me, for those of you who don't know, he had just gone through a double lung transplant recently, and he reached out to me about a year ago, and he was planning a party and was wanting to know about a few venues in town that he might could rent out for the party. Anybody who knows Bart knows he was always planning a party. But he told me how proud he was of me for my work on the City Council, and I said, ah, whatever, Bart, you know, it's one day a week, no big deal. And he said, listen, Jason, let me tell you something, son. He said, I don't know if you know this, but a lot of presidents of the United States used to be governors of a state, and a lot of governors of states used to be mayors of cities, and a lot of mayors of cities used to be city councilmen. He said, so as far as I'm concerned, you're three jobs away from being president of the United States. He said, so don't, don't downplay what you're doing up there. So I tell people that all the time, I'm three interviews away from being president. So again, my condolences to the Scotts and the Freemans and the Agricolas, man, Bart was a really special guy. And with that in mind, I will say War Eagle, Auburn's playing Thursday in Birmingham, can't wait to go down there and hopefully see them pull off a victory. I wish them the best, and I also heard some other team in the states playing down there too, but whatever. That's all I have.
Thanks, Councilman Wilson. Councilwoman Minatra?
I just want to say how much I appreciate the mayor and, and everything that he's doing as fast as he's moving. And I would just say that last Thursday, in the Wall Street Journal, on the front page, was a story about the mayor of Aniana. Now, I would love for Mayor Ford to be on the front page of the Wall Street Journal, but I would not want him to be on the front page of the Wall Street Journal with TikTok. So, Mayor Ford, you keep doing what you're doing.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Minatra. Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Councilman President Beck and President Future Wilson. I didn't realize I made the tournament. My apologies. Just want to say, construction started on the Gorge Trail, the new Gorge Trail, one of the Knocklow Falls, good things are happening at D7. It's going to be a good way for the fishermen and the hikers and the runners, joggers, everybody getting done in that Gorge is a lot better than it has been in the past thirty years, so we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to mention, also want to thank our guests here today, the parents. I used to be a parent like you guys, I guess I'm still a parent, but those are some, those are some trying times. You get up early on a Saturday morning and drive to wherever you drive to, about halfway there, you realize where you're driving to, because then you're awake, and it's exciting and it's fun. We have so many bright students in our city school system, and you know, this is some of the cream of the crop. I know there's others, but these are the ones that are on the Scholars Bowl team. Thank you all for putting in the work, that's extra work. You know, you're doing that on your own time, and you've been real successful, and thank you, Dr. Bliss, is that right? Thank you for bringing it back and getting it going again, and our principal at Gadsden Middle School, Mr. Goodman, thank you for what you do, and it's just exciting to see that, that you want to do this and that you're competing hard. I know it's not easy, it's nerve wracking, and congratulations to the female on the team, and I'm sorry that I can't remember your name, but thank you for what you're doing, and congratulations on being number four in the state. That's, that's pretty good. In fact, that's real good. That's excellent. Congratulations. Along those, well, I went to the fishing event at the venue this weekend, it was a Friday through Sunday event, thousands of people attended. We had vendors all the way from California that came to this, and all over the southeast, and it was a phenomenal success, so thank you to the Parks and Recreation Department for all the work you did. They worked countless hours, and then, Mayor, I was told that, you know, it closed at five on Sunday, they began tearing down because they had to have it ready at 9:00 AM Monday morning for the Girlfriend Gala, is that what that is, is the next event? There's, there's so many events there, I can't keep up, but, so they had it ready at nine o'clock. It went from this big fishing rodeo to a Girlfriend Gala in a matter of hours. So what a great, hardworking team that we have over there, Scott Elkins, Debra Hawkins, and there's other names I won't remember, but very grateful for them and grateful for the folks from Knoxville, Tennessee, that came to put that event on, that was outstanding. And y'all, one of the things, I saw them Saturday night at dinner, and they commented and bragged on our town, our city, for being so clean, and they felt safe being downtown Gadsden, so chief to you and your staff, our police department, thank you guys, and they just could not say enough nice things about Gadsden, Alabama, and they can't wait to come back. So that is really a very positive report. We had our first District 4 community meeting at Yer Brown Elementary School, well attended, and the predominant conversation was, we had a traffic study done on Wildhaven Circle and Country Club Drive at the request of local citizens there, and thank you Heath Williamson for the work you put in and for the information that was shared. There's a subsequent study being done in that same area to kind of shore up maybe some questions of, of the timing of, of the, of the first traffic study, so we'll have more information on that, and I appreciate the mayor's staff being there, and the mayor came by and thanks for, for sharing that night, and then our Parks and Rec folks were there, our Public Works Department was there to talk about those type of items. So it was all in all, a real good meeting, and I appreciate the citizens coming out and having the concern that they have, and we'll have more on the speeding and the traffic study in the coming weeks. And want to end with, kind of concur with Councilwoman Minatra, Mayor, thank you for your, you and your staff and the direction that you're taking our city, and I've said it a lot, and I don't want to keep saying it because then people don't hear if you keep saying it, but if you're not excited about the City of Gadsden right now, I mean, I just, I don't understand, there's so many positive things going on from what you're doing, cleaning up City Hall. When you walk out the door, y'all, we have a freshly painted room out there, and there's new pictures, every floor is being painted, the Church of the Highlands came a couple of weeks ago, and pressure washed all outside, it, it looks really clean, they did some shrub trimming, there's going to be some additional landscape work done outside City Hall, the mayor's taking pride in our facilities, hopefully that's going to permeate all over the city where we take pride in our neighborhoods, more so than maybe that we're doing, and so it all starts at the top. The speed of the gang is the speed of the boss. So thank you for having Warp Speed at this point, it's, it's very exciting, and just, just can't say enough about what things that are happening. And you know, recognize Mr. Ferguson, Kevin Ferguson, sitting out there, longtime friend and also longtime supporter of the City of Gadsden, numerous properties and rentals, and he did a pivot the other day, we just found out in pre-council meeting, the new extension of 759 is going to take away some of his property, so he has tenants on that property, so what does he do? He goes and buys property a little bit to the side of that, and he's going to replay, he's going to place his tenants in that property. So thank you for, for caring about your tenants, number one, and then thank you for how you number one. And then thank you for how you invest in this, in the city of Gadsden. It's, we need more Kevin Ferguson's, and we need more Dave Cummins. I talked with Dave about his willingness to go from $10 to $500 on those lots. And he said, I made that deal over ten years ago, and, and that's the way that it's, that it's supposed to be. But he said something that was real important. He said, you know, he's got over sixty houses now in the last ten, twelve years. That's sixty families that are buying water from the Gadsden Water Works and Sewer Board. They're signed up for sewer. They're paying taxes in the, in the city of Gadsden. And he said, you know, those families could have moved outside the city limits. So he said, we need to keep our residents in our city. So hats off to Dave Cummins, and thank you for having that kind of vision. And I hope that, hope that becomes contagious, because we, we need more of that activity of Mr. Ferguson and Mr. Cummins. So thank you all very much. Is there any more left? We have a health fair. Ivory, would you tell us about the health fair?
Yes. Councilman Avery is not here today. And so he asked me to make this announcement on his behalf. On March the 18th, at the Carver Gymnasium, there will be a health fair and also a job fair. So that's March the 18th. The hours are from 12 to 4:00. 12 to 4:00, and I believe that's this Saturday, March 18th.
All right. Thank you very much. Any others? All right. Well, with that, thank you for being here. Have a great day. We stand adjourned.